The Silver Consolidated School District. It is April 16th, 2018. Mrs. Hernandez, if you would conduct a roll call.
No, no, the shot's not here yet.
She'll be ready.
Oh, okay.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mrs. Montanaro?
Here.
Mr. Khan?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Flores?
Here.
And then Dr. Diaz will be right in. She's rejoined us just in a minute, so we can just take note when she comes in. Welcome, everyone, again, members of the board, administration, guests, community members. If you all will join me and stand for the pledge of allegiance and then the salute to the New Mexico flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(Inaudible) of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of a perfect friendship among united cultures.
Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. This has been our first meeting on our board book. That's why we've got the laptops in front of us instead of the paper packets that we've had in the past. So please bear with us as we navigate through this board book process. And thanks to Mr. Potts and the IT folks for getting it set up and for Mrs. Hernandez to get everything out to us. I think once we get used to it, it'll make things a lot easier and helping us stay organized as well. So first, on our agenda this evening is to review and approve the minutes of the March 20th, 2018 work session and the March 20th, 2018 regular meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review those minutes?
I have not, so I won't.
We're gonna take a minute to look through them, if you'd like. Mrs. Hernandez, did I give you the start time or did you?
No.
Yeah?
Understood.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Dr. Diaz, we're just reviewing the minutes from our work session and our regular meeting in March.
Did you already review?
I did.
Okay, so if you feel like they're good, we can go. I just haven't had a chance.
I've seen them, and I don't have any suggested revisions.
Okay. Shall you make the motion in a second?
Motion for approval?
Got a motion to approve our March 20th work session and regular meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approval of our work session and regular meeting minutes for the March 20th, 2018 meetings as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes. Next on our agenda this evening is consideration and approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes, revisions? I think we're good on our agenda.
Oh, Howie did the okay.
Very well. I'll entertain a motion to approve our agenda this evening. So moved. Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Very well, all those in favor of approving our agenda this evening signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, our agenda is approved. Next on our agenda this evening is programs and presentations. These are non-action items. And first up is Senator Howie Morales. Mr. Morales, welcome this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Superintendent Brown, thank you for the opportunity to be here to present to you. I always want to go around to my local governments and to kind of give an update of what took place. So Linda, thank you for getting me on the agenda and reminding me, too, because if you didn't remind me, I probably would have forgotten it. So it worked out well, so thank you for this. I want to, first of all, say that I thought it was a productive legislative session. For the first time in many years that I can remember, we actually had some dollars to work with. And that became relevant because of the oil and gas revenues that were on the uptick. I do think that when it's kind of a double-edged sword, because when we have lower prices at the gas pump, we're paying less there, but yet services, funding, programs are cut across the state. When we pay more at the gas pump and the gas prices are on the rise, that means that the revenues are higher for the state as well. We saw a benefit that came in from the state, and I just want to thank each of your board members who contacted me, Mr. Brown, who advocated for the district as well, to help me in direction that what we needed for the state. As you know, education is always at the heart of what I do, and combining that with the finances, we were able to do some productive things. We were able to put in, I believe, 90 million additional resources above the line funding. And I think that's helpful, because we've had reductions, even though we've tried to climb a little bit, we've had reductions in many of the other years that have taken place. I still remain very concerned on the below-the-line dollars that have taken place. I think that we put too many dollars that don't go to the school districts. Isn't the authority of the administration and the board to decide what to do with it? And so that was another discussion. Primarily in the below-the-line part of it that was a concern to me is when you have merit pay or incentives like that, that doesn't equalize the pay for educators. I think that that's one area that I did work to try to reduce that a little, but nonetheless, there was some in there. Finally, after many years and many attempts, we did have, fortunately, my bill to give educator raises, not just educators, but state employees across New Mexico, was finally able to put in some raises. We put in some language in there, which I think is really important, because I wasn't comfortable that we were giving a higher percentage to certain educators and not others, like educational assistants and those custodians and other employees. And so I tried to advocate that we can make it across the board even. The language that was put in in the compromise was that the districts would choose an average in doing so. And I appreciate Mr. Brown and other superintendents across the state who came forward and said that they'd rather to have the average work would take less as administration and give more to the lower end pay, which I think is important, because we're all educators. And I think that was very honorable of that discussion, so I appreciate that. It was signed. We did have it in the budget, and we'll see the benefit of that. The unfortunate thing is just last week is I got word, and I think many of you did, that our insurance premiums are going up. So that's a concern. When you get a two-and-a-half percent raise and you get a 4% increase in the insurance premiums, we're gonna have to get a handle of that, because that's something that's very deflating to our educators and our state employees across New Mexico. There's gonna have to be serious discussion, which I assume will be taking up this legislative interim during our finance committee. So if you have any suggestions on how we can have some cost containment there, I'm open to hearing from you. I think that that's definitely something that we need to understand. The biggest threat, in my opinion, in public education is the shortage of teachers. And with teachers not being able to be recruited, not having the opportunities to come into our school districts, especially in the rural areas, I think that we see the biggest impact that we opened it up, unfortunately, for the possibility of privatization of education. And that's something that we all are here for, is to keep public education public. So these are some of the threats that are out there. I do appreciate that and some capital out of funding. The request that came in from the Silver Schools was to fund technology. And I asked Mr. Brown, is this gonna be district-wide for Cliff, for all Silver Schools? And he said absolutely. And so we're able to fund that. I believe I appropriated 30,000. I'm not sure if the other, Representative Dow, Representative Martinez, were able to add to that, but that was signed in, so I know that that would be some help. It wasn't as much as we'd like to do it and fund it. I think the full request is 60,000, but hopefully the others were able to help out with that. There was additionally some money that was put in there for school safety. And I know that you guys have taken that issue very, very seriously. And I know that the discussions that me and Mr. Flores have had and seeing how we can have the safest possible environments for our school, I know there's a lot of opinions out there of how to do so. We did put in some money, and I believe that's allocated for, in four-year increments, up to 60 million that could be done statewide. And I'm sure that they gave you direction of how to access those funds. And I think that that's something that we need to look at. However the district chooses to do it, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of input from the community. I think that that's gonna be helpful, because we all agree that we want to make sure that we can protect our children, protect our educators. It's just a matter of getting to the details to do so. I did want to also address some of the discussions that were there. I think that there was a little bit of confusion that the legislation that I had to give teachers raises was tied to a four-day week, and they were completely two separate bills. And so I think we worked through that. I appreciate the assistance from Mr. Brown, from Mr. Mendoza and Colby, to make sure that we didn't have any doubt going in on the raises. I don't want those raises to be affected in any way, because they were completely separate. So in regard to the four-day week, what took place right there in House Bill Two, which started in the House, the discussions right there was, it came over basically that any school district on a four-day week would choose to stay on a four-day week but take a 5% reduction in their student legalization guarantee or the SEG. That just wasn't doable, because as it is, schools are strapped for cash, and then you take a 5% hit. When it came over to the Senate, we know that Cliff is on a four-day week, for example. You have other schools, Logan, I believe, Texaco, some other schools around the state that are as well. And so the amendment was put in that those in there at this point will remain grandfathered in. And I think the biggest discussion there that we'll take up and we'll probably have invite members of the board to go in and get some testimony is because the LESC and the LFC are really concerned that this is something that a trend has taken place, going back to the teacher shortage, that school districts are in a position now that we have to come up with creative ways to attract teachers into the district. But at the cost of that, some of those creative ways are to have a four-day school week. Makes it very difficult, because the LESC and the LFC, which is Legislative Finance Committee and Legislative Education Study Committee, they want to make sure and see, okay, time on task, how's that gonna be? They want to make sure and see what the data shows to ensure that that's the best possible route. If it's not, then of course, you know, there'll be some other measures that'll be taken forward with that. But for where it stands for Silver Schools right now, and all schools across the state that currently aren't a four-day week, it's on hold until the evaluation comes out and says, what is it cost beneficial to go a four-day week? Is there a benefit to the district by doing so? Is there incentives that we can do other than reducing instruction time? Those are the kind of discussions that are gonna be in place, and I'll definitely want you to be involved. I know the first presentation will be done next week, just to give a broad overview of the state of New Mexico and time on task. And then later on, and I believe we're gonna be coming into Silver City and to Daming, so I'll do my best to try to make that issue be one of the agenda items during that time when we're here. I believe it's in September, maybe October, that we'll be touring down in our area. I think it's good discussion, and I think that there's arguments on both sides of the issue of why it needs to be done. The real truth is gonna come out in the data. And I see that there was a real impact to, I think attendance won't be affected as much, but there's an impact to the standardized-based assessments in a positive or negative way, at least that they'll have some discussion. So that's where we're at with that. And I want to make sure that I am available to answer any questions that you may have, because there was a lot that went on this 30-day session. And I just appreciate the communication that I have with my local school districts, with my local educators who keep me informed of what's important out there. And I can tell you that I'll continue to work as hard as I can to change the direction of what's happening in education in New Mexico. I think that there's a lot of issues that we're dealing with in the state, but I think that there's some fixes that we can do that can really make it beneficial to value, attract educators, to make sure that we can have the best possible instruction for our students, and then get the best possible outcomes. And I, you know, I'm open to suggestions on how we can do that as well. With that, Mr. President, and Mr. Brown, and members of the board, I'll happily answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from the board?
My only question was if you could tell me what those legislative bodies are that are doing that study again?
Okay. So it's Legislative Education Study Committee, LESC, and the Legislative Finance Committee, LFC.
Okay.
And I think that this will be helpful for the board, and I happen to sit on both committees, so I'll have some input on that. I think I'm one of the only legislators who sits on both, so I'll have some input and information that you have that I can share. I definitely would appreciate that. I think it'll be helpful for a school board as yourself, because it puts you in a difficult spot, because it could be something that can divide a community. And people believe one way or the other way very strongly. At least you're gonna have some data to justify whatever you're voting, as if the vote comes up, if that's necessary, you have the data that you can fall back on, that's done in a completely neutral, nonpartisan, bicameral approach.
And when do you expect that to be kind of wrapped up? A year from now?
No, I'm expecting by the end. We worked through the interims, so I'm expecting by November or December, there'll probably be some good data. By that time, there'll be some data that'll come out from this current school year. And I've spoken with the Colby School District. They'll probably be one of the school districts that's gonna be really evaluated thoroughly, because they're one of the larger school districts on the four-day week. And so that could be a benefit as far as those that are proponents of the four-day week, if they show the progress there. It could also work in the other way, if they show that there's a real detriment to student success, that it may be hindering. So I have talked to the school board members and administration there that they probably will be visited and have an in-depth review.
Thank you.
I have two questions. One may be for you, one may not. I wasn't aware of the increase in insurance rates, so I'm just curious if we have a number or percentage on that, what that's gonna look like, but...
4%.
Okay. I'll go with that.
And on that, we're self-insured, right?
Yes.
Correct. And so that was a surprise to us as well. So when I was contacted last week that the letters had gone out, it was a surprise there, even though that I think we tried to raise questions, is what's gonna be the change? Because what we know is every single year, it's been on the rise.
Yeah.
And so it was deflating in some ways, like, yes, it's not that much, you know, it's not as much as we wanted, 2.5% wasn't as much as we wanted, or, you know, 2.5% average. But at least it was a step in the right direction. And then you have a blow that took place right there. So we're gonna be asking questions and say, okay, where did the 4% come from? What is the need that caused it to rise? And then really try to dig into that.
Is there a way to negotiate that? Because it seems like it just keeps increasing without any cap?
Reason.
Or reasoning? But that's not like... The other question I had is, I heard rumors about Park going out the window like it is in a lot of other states. Is there any discussion regarding that? Because I know it's heavily tied to a lot of our...
So that's personally, I did an op-ed, I think it ran in newspapers all across the state. I do respect the work that educators are doing all across the state. I see it in my own personal views when I drop off my daughter at Stout, and I see the work that's going on in Sixth Street and all across the district. Educators are under a real difficult position, because the department says you either do this, or you're gonna be penalized. I don't think that we should do it in a way that's gonna be prosecutorial. I think we need to do it in a way that's inspirational and have students succeed. So personally, I've always felt that because of the genesis of why Park has come in, the amount of dollars that we spend that could otherwise come to the classrooms, could come for activities, could come for programs, could come for other areas, unfortunately, there's a lot of dollars that are being spent on this test. Most states have abandoned it now. I think that, you know, if, I'm fortunate enough to be in a position next year where there's a senator and another role, that I'll advocate that we do away with the Park testing. I think that we've had evaluations and assessments in our in place. And Mr. Brown, you've been a superintendent for many years. You were there when we probably had the CTBS, and we had our own New Mexico assessment. I believe that we can get a better gauge, and we have to trust that our educators know the assessment of their students and allow them the flexibility to educate and to assess and give the proper updates of where those students are. I don't think by going in and having a computerized system, that really isn't reflective of what's happening the whole year in the school. So you don't see me really advocating one way or another. I don't get too excited when a school grade comes out as, you know, one grade or another, because I know it's all tied to a faulty system. And I'll advocate that we not get rid of assessments, because assessments are key. We know that. I just think that the particular assessment reason in the state of New Mexico is flawed and outdated.
Thank you.
Are there questions from the board? Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Senator Morales, thank you for being here, and thanks for your work on behalf of the school district and districts around the state.
Thank you. And if I can just add one more thing, you know, I was extremely proud, I'm always proud of the districts that I represent. I was extremely proud when I had our New Mexico History Day students from Silver High School who went up there, and they were my expert witnesses. And they filled the finance room, and they were asking for $100,000 for their program and allow them to continue. And this wasn't just $100,000 for Silver Schools. This was statewide, 7,000 students who participated in probably one of the most phenomenal programs that I've seen. I went to Washington myself to see them in action, to see the college preparatory work that's done. And they did a great job, so proud of them. I was so disappointed that I was able to get that money in the budget for it to be vetoed. There was no reason for it to be vetoed. But again, rest assured that that's something that I'll advocate, that we get the funding there. We may need some assistance, just as Mr. Brown did when I asked him, can they please come up and be my expert witnesses? He made sure, got a bus up there. National History Day, I think, assisted with the hotel rooms. We may need some assistance from the district to keep that program alive, because my concern is once that program doesn't have funding and it goes away, it's gone. If we can just sustain it for one more year, then I believe that we can make that program shine and turn, probably prepare students more so than many other programs for college.
And I would just thank you for letting them be there, because it had an effect on them as well. So I appreciate you asking them to come and help you.
Thank you. And credit to Senator Smith and Demme, he's the Chair of Finance Committee. And we were done hearing bills, and as a senator, I said, we gotta hear this one. And he says, bring them on up. And so I want to give him credit, too.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening, under Information and Presentations, is David Huguen Welcome, Mr. Huguen.
Hello. I want to hand out to you guys, so there's been a couple of changes coming out throughout the state, so I want to kind of give everybody a little bit of a heads-up. And we also have some stats we want to go over with the board.
Thank you.
Some programs that we've been working on.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Jose Salvi-Guillen, and I do truancy for the elementary schools here in Silver City.
First and foremost, I wanted to thank you for your time, being able to present. We do separate roles, and we have separate ways of doing things within our school district. I deal with the middle school and high school. I'm under a grant from PED, so I get paid through PED. Benefits and salary come from a grant that I'm under. So she's a grant through the school, so we kind of work different capacities. Ultimately, our job is in this program is to make sure kids attend school regularly. If you look at the bottom of that page I gave you, there's some stats, and that's the current stats, that myself and Ms. Guille are, these are the schools that we address for the most part. We don't, the Sixth Street Schools primarily dealing with pre-K and kindergarten, an understate statute currently, they don't do a lot of enforcement at that level. And the district attorney has to sign off on that, but right now, there's no actual anything as far as state law that allows us to take enforcement action. So we don't really mess with them a whole lot, because we don't have a lot of teeth to do a whole lot with them. That might change. I understand they're working on language on that for current law that they're trying to adjust. And we'll deal with that if it happens. So you can look at our stats, like I said, Jose Barrios, they stay relatively high there, Harrison Schmidt went up point to 95. GW Stouts at 93. La Plata Middle Schools went up to 96. Silver High's at a 91. One of our, I know Mr. Brown's goal is 95 throughout the district, and we really pushed hard for that this year. These aren't the end-of-the-school-year stats, because we kind of, we're still waiting for everything to close, so we're still waiting for that to come up. One of the things I wanted to talk to you is, we have a policy that's in place right now for truancy. It's a drastic change from last year. We went from about 17 days of excuse absences down to seven. So there's a little bit of a learning curve for some of our parents, so we're seeing a little bit of education that we're having to do with a lot of our parents, so that they know that, hey, this has changed. So we're dealing with a little bit of that throughout our deal. Overall, for our policy seems to be effective for the most part, with the exception of the learning curve. We are trying to work out a system that we're, we actually got it in place now, it might change, and I'll get into that here in a bit. We have an enforcement policy throughout the state of New Mexico. Not every school does an enforcement policy as far as referring people to, or referring parent or guardian to law enforcement for criminal charges. Silver School District does do that. We made some changes with Captain Portillo from the Silver State Police Department, where we were able to streamline the way we do it. So we have, we've tried to do everything we can do. We're not successful at getting them to school. We refer them to law enforcement, and then they file charges with magistrate court. That's really what we try not to do, but we end up there at times. I think between myself and Ms. Guille, we're at 20 for the school year filing charges on parents. And I think we're actually working on more right now, just we haven't got to that point yet. So that's the unfortunate part of this job, is when we don't get them to engage and get the students to school, we do go criminal and try and get that resolved. On the second page that I gave you guys, there's a tier, and PED's changing to that tier. Eventually, Silver and every other school in the state's gonna approve to that. Initially, we were doing the, we were doing truancies, where we were considered. Now they're going to chronic absenteeism, which is not so much being truant and not attending school because you missed, it's even if you missed to go on vacation. The state's starting to look at that and saying, that's chronic absenteeism, not truancy, and they want that a little word also. That's gonna be a challenge. It hasn't happened yet, but it's right around the corner. This is an example of what we're looking at. So for instance, when we would do a chair one intervention now, it would be when they missed three days of school unexcused. So if a kid didn't show up for three days, nobody called in, there's no medical excuses, that'd be a chair one intervention. Now, when, the way PED's looking at it, if they missed three days of school excused and one day of school that's unexcused, that's gonna be a chair one intervention. So our workload basically probably tripled, almost. Now, how that's gonna play into next couple of years, I don't know. Like I said, this is all, we just got good with, the whole state got good with truancy. Now they're changing it to chronic absenteeism. So once we got something that's working, it took a big flip. So the tier two and tier three is kind of self-explanatory, but that's just the change that we're seeing, because we do have tiers in place for one, two, and three. And they do follow school policy, so we are already addressing it currently. But like I said, this is on the horizon, and we should be, we have a meeting in May. We should be informed more on what PED's gonna want to do throughout the district. My understanding, this isn't gonna affect state law at this point, because I did ask at one of the meetings, and they say at this point in time, the language hasn't changed throughout the state law, so it's not staying consistent. But eventually, we'll cross that bridge when it comes to. One of the things that we work on is incentives. Part of the state law is that we try and do an incentive. It can be interpreted differently. A lot of schools look at incentives as the, oh, I'm sorry, interventions, excuse me, trying to do interventions before we get up to filing charges. Interventions are, like I said, they're real vague. A lot of schools look at the letters as intervention, which is, sometimes it works, sometimes a letter's all you need, and then, you know, it's fixed. I've worked with, like I said, we do different programs. So I worked with Mr. Brown in this mind on a program for a truancy court program, which is the first time it's been done in this district, the way we're doing it. Part of the change in this program from past programs is when we invite people to this truancy program, it's through municipal court with Judge Reese. Part of this program is, it's not a program that gets people in trouble. At that level of the intervention, they don't get fines, they don't get fees, they don't get punished. What we do is we make contacts throughout the community, and the majority of the services that we refer kids to during this program are free. And I'll give you a couple of examples for that. There's some money available through the JPO office that provides a counselor for certain projects, I guess. If we have a kid that comes in and needs, they disclose something that might be of a personal nature, or they're having some issues with a death in the family, or a bunch of things have come out in this program, we'll refer them to Ms. Barry, for instance. And she'll see them for a period of time. There's been some growing pains on this, I shouldn't say growing pains, but there's on this, I shouldn't say growing pains, but there's been some changes because it is so new, we've had to make a lot of changes to try and streamline it, I think we worked on most of the bugs, so next year we should be a little bit better, we have also referred over to the Learning Lab program, which is a program where if we have a kid that's failing, we've changed the Learning Lab before, it was where kind of kids that were suspended or expelled would go over there to keep their credit, we kind of changed it a little bit to where if we catch a kid that's failing, say academically, he has three or four Fs, we send him to that program for a couple of weeks, they go there half day and then they go back to school the other half and then they pick the grade up, we've seen success in that, because we, I'll give you an example, the other day, we had a girl that was ready to drop out because her grades were so low, we sent her over there for the three weeks, I talked to the Attending Secretary, Johnson, she worked real good with us, so she says she's doing really good now, this is part of that truancy court program where we're getting these parents and these kids to attend this program and giving them services instead of giving them punishment, so it's been, I think it's doing pretty good, and part of an example of that is when we initially started it, we started at La Plata Middle School, Ms. Alvarez, because it's, we didn't, we kind of started off as a conversation on the way back from the train, so when we started it, we were kind of, well, let's start small and then we'll move up, so, La Plata Middle School last year was at a ninety-two percent, ninety-two point nine, La Plata this year is a ninety-six point two, and that's the highest they've probably been in a very long time, the jump alone is significant because typically a school will see an increase maybe one, maybe two points at the most, Ms. Alvarez has a lot to do with that too because he's, you know, he's really, when we have these truancy courts, he attends them, so it's not just me, the parent and the judge, it's there's a mediator, mediator, we have somebody from the school attend, the high school, we have somebody, the Chococo attend, the Hillside, somebody in his place, so when we talk to the kids and we talk to the parent, we let them know we're there for support, not for punishment, so we're really trying to change the way we're addressing it, we've seen success, like I said, I think this is a part of it, we're, next year, I just had a meeting with the municipal judge, she's wanting to continue this project in her courtroom, I guess, and most of these, most of the stuff we do doesn't cost anybody anything, the judges volunteer their time, so we're not charging anybody for it, if we do have to use HMS, because we do refer a lot to HMS, because they have a lot of services that most people don't, they work the sliding ease to try and accommodate them, we've even made contacts with the Gospel Mission for food baskets, we have baskets of food at our program when we do truancy court, we've had parents go in there and say, we don't have any food, okay, so we give them two bags of food, say, well, there you go, now get with HMS, get with these people, now let's get food on the table, not, sometimes it's not that, what we're learning, like I said, this process is kind of evolving, it's not that they don't want to, sometimes they don't know how to get them, or they're embarrassed to get them, so we try, this is the angle we're trying to do, like I said, I think we're showing a lot of success in it, we even recently, one of our most recent contacts was with the Women's Shelter at Foryo, because we've seen disclosures in our truancy court where students will come and talk about being abused at one time, either by a boyfriend or by a relative, so we've made contact with them and they're willing to see our high school kids and counsel them for your charge, so we're able to refer to all these people now instead of, you know, what we've done in the past, which kind of worked, but it kind of didn't, things have been brought up like, well, they're just going to, some of them are just going to mess up again anyway, and that's true to a certain point, but if we're getting these kids services and they feel good for a couple of weeks because they're seeing a counselor, that's a couple of weeks the kid felt good, that's important, I mean, some of these kids, when we started this program, we thought it was going to be real simple, real simple stuff, and then we started getting these disclosures in the courtroom setting, lack of a better word, a lot of disclosure were coming out, like, oh, wow, we weren't ready for this, so we had to start reaching further and start asking for more people to come in and try and help, I didn't get this information, another thing, if you guys have an idea of somebody that wants to participate in this program that's not on this, by all means, reach out, because when we start this program again next school year, we want to have more people, like I said, we are opening up the high school beginning, that is a lot more than what we've seen originally, because, it's like I said, we wanted to make sure we could sustain it before we open it up to the high school because the high school essentially could have been the middle school, we don't do this in the elementary level, that's been asked, and the reason why we don't do this in the elementary level is we don't want to expose our elementary kids to a court setting, because that's, to me, it's inappropriate, I just don't see the point in doing that, so I'll let Ms. Guille talk about what she's been doing at the elementary school level because it's totally separate, except for the charges, we're going to be hand in hand, but she does have some pretty good projects for the elementary school.
So, when I started doing truancy, I noticed we were, or at least I was focusing on the punishing part, punishing part, and I came up with an idea of incentives for the students who do have perfect attendance per month, so if I were to have a meeting with the student, well, not with the student, with the parent, we would make a deal and say, you know what, I do perfect attendance every month and I would recognize that one kid, so it would be a first grader, well, first through sixth grade for each school, and I basically, you know, it was, I call it a mystery box, and the kids stick in there, they get goodies, toys, I mean, whatever they want, and to me, that, I feel happy to see them happy, I don't do, we don't, well, here in Silver, we don't do, what do you call it, contracts, so whenever I have, I've had several meetings where the student is in the, for example, parent teacher conference, I've had several students and I tell, what would you like, so I've had several gift cards, Golden Corral gift cards, Walmart gift cards, and that's something I give out to the students as an incentive, and it feels good to know these kids are liking to be in school and have perfect attendance per month, so that's what I've been doing.
Probably one of the closing things I wanted to talk about is, well, two of the things we want to talk about is, they're changing the word truancy in the state to what could be considered truancy people because they are, expanded as somewhat bigger to chronic absenteeism, which changes from the truancy, they're changing our titles for the grant purposes to the Attendance Success Initiative program, so that's going to be a little bit of a change, I don't know how long it's going to last because things have been changing quite a bit lately, so that's something that if you start seeing, excuse me, you start seeing in the ASI, that's basically a new truancy.
What was it, Attendance?
Attendance Success Initiative is what they're wanting to change it to, one of the things that gets, and sometimes in truancy court, people question, why are we here, like it's an inconvenience, and my explanation to them is it's more convenient for me just to file charges against them and just spend the time and the resources to get them to the program, but we feel it's important because it kind of, like I said, we're here to help them, not punish them, punishment does come if they're not cooperating or they don't comply, but, you know, like I said, it is easier for us just to file paperwork with the CPE and then get them charged and not worry about it until next year, but that's part of the reason why we do work this program, because we don't just address truancy, we address grades, so the school print out the kids' grades, we'll work on tutoring programs if we can, we talk to these kids about, you know, talk to the parents, educate the parents on power school, stuff like that, so we're not just hitting the truancy part, we're hitting as much as we can, we've, I can't even tell you how much bullying stuff has come out of that program, because I know it's true, of course, but then you have some kids that are looking for a way out, but we all treat everything like it's, it is a problem for them, so we can try and correct it, so, we, like I said, we did expand it quite a bit with Mr. Brown and Ms. Mindon, they were supporting me in the beginning, so that's what we're able to push so far and hopefully next year we'll be able to start earlier, maybe see Silver High's attendance go up, it'd be nice to see that big point jump, a couple of points would be better than, if the state's stagnant, so, is there any questions?
Questions from the board?
I have, I have one question, so, if it changes in August, is it going to be explained differently? Because this year I had tons of questions from constituents, they thought it was seven per semester, they didn't know it was the whole seven for the whole year, so I had to explain to them, and I was thinking maybe, you know, if things change and knowing what's coming up in August, if it can be better, well, not better explained, but explained and more detailed to the parents, so they know the consequences, you know, of what's going to be a chronic absence or, you know, and then you have those parents that have a student that's medically inclined where they're going to have surgery, so where is that going to fall, so, you know, that's, if it's better explained, then the parents in the long run will know, you know, well, this is what we need to do prior to, so there's no problems.
Well, that policy, the policy that we have right now is what, we just changed it last year, and it was, it's okay, I guess, but I don't know exactly what they're going to want, so I, I mean, I would like to think of, I mean, if we don't get it, we don't get a definite what's going to happen before the policy gets revised or before they do the student handbook, it's going to stay the way it is, and like I say, that's the thing with the learning curve, when we were doing the truancy, when truancy started, it has gone through significant changes every year, sometimes in a couple of months, we see one big change from the other, so it's, I would like to think they're going to do a smooth transition, I honestly, I can't.
So that was a school district policy change, correct, from seven, seventeen to the seven?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that probably could be best explained to parents in the handbooks.
It's in the handbook currently.
Yeah.
When we did the revision, that was part of the revision, this, what we go off of right now is unexcused absences, so if the parent has excuse absences and they're like a seven excuse, we don't bother them, now with the, with the change to chronic absenteeism, we might.
Yeah.
But I don't, like I said, I'm just giving you a heads up on it because I don't know what direction it's going to end up, but that's the direction it's going.
Okay.
The medical question, if a kid does have medical excuses, it doesn't count against them because it's a physician giving them an excuse not to be there, we're not medically trained, so we can't question the medical physician's request, so we honor it, once in a while, we do see a kid come up that does have medical excuses and we correct it, but if they refer to the policies, it says what you can excuse and what you can't, what's in there, just the change really shook things up in the beginning.
I just don't feel, not all parents really dig and read it, so if it's maybe verbally or, I don't know, some way.
Well, when we go to the truancy court, if we get to that level, what I do is I let the municipal judge talk about what the current law is and what the consequences are for violating that law, if I have a school administrator in there, they'll explain the school policy and how to excuse and what they won't excuse, so when we get to that level, we do address it, even though it's just addressed at the policy, we still revisit it and talk about it at that level again when we get to that point, except the only drawback is we started the high school so late, we didn't catch it all, but we expected to have some more patients, that was one.
Thank you.
Um, I just, I just wanted to clarify for myself, so you, how long have you been doing this program at La Plata?
We started at the beginning of school year.
So just this year, that's the first, and so it's not currently at the high school, but you're going to expand to the high school now?
No, we just started at the high school in January, kind of, we're really kind of, because we expected it to be, we didn't want to start a program throughout that part of this whole upper district and then it not be successful, so we started small, and then now that we showed proof of concept, we expanded it, but part of the growing pain on that one was, we kind of opened it up, they were like, we tried to do it between five and seven, we were pulling eight and nine, eight and nine day kids, just to get them services if they needed it, so we put ourselves, you know, I mean, we've been working the high school like crazy, Johnson's been, I mean, trying to get all these referrals through the court and everything, it's been a lot of work for everybody, but we expected it, so we, we really were kind of trying to catch up, but we started late, so we kind of.
Gotcha, okay.
Question for you, you say you're grant funded and is your grant due next year or how long does your grant?
Well, we're going to revisit the grant, it's, it just opened in April, we're going to revisit that, while we have a meeting on how we're going to do it, the grant right now is yearly, this new grant that got opened up for the, closes the management for two years, so we can, if we can, we qualify for the grant, the grant will be funded for two years instead of one, because of the big push and some of the chronic absenteeism, I understand we might be asking, trying to get more, we've tried to get more coaches in the past grant funded, because we know the budget crunch, and so everybody's in, we haven't been successful, but maybe some of these numbers that we're showing, they like to see progress, we have progress, so maybe that'll be able to fund another position or two guarantees, well, guarantee they'll fund this one, but I think they're going to like what they see, so we're going to be optimistic about it, but we are going to shoot for more positions than we can get, and they are for two years instead of one.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
I did have one more question, just for clarification, when we're looking at the percentages, this is the percentage of students that are not in violation of the seven days, is that?
That's your attendance rate, so that's what, that's what the rate is for, and if you look, Silver High ran that at one forty from, for the last two years, so one forty, one hundred and forty days from the beginning to current, or to the current for that one forty, that was what the attendance percentage was for one hundred and forty days in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, you know, where we're at.
Okay.
So that's kind of where the percentages, they run from one forty, and I think some of the schools went up a little higher because we were, we were kind of pushing kind of hard to get this.
So they take it like on a daily rate and then they average those for a hundred and forty days, is that correct?
There's different ways to do it, but for this, for this purpose, that's what it is, average percentage rate for a hundred and forty days, from beginning school to when they're around this, and a hundred and seventy one days in the others, so it kind of jumped a little bit, but we're just trying to give you guys a picture of where.
Yeah.
And like I said, a lot of this stuff has to do with the truancy, but the schools have been pushing real hard, the secretaries have been pushing, our principals have been pushing real hard too, I mean, they've been working real good with this, so it's been, it's been kind of nice, to tell you the truth, it hasn't been bad.
Mr. Brown, any questions?
No, sir.
All right, thank you all very much for your presentation and for your work with our students in the district.
I said, if you have any, anybody that wants to help next year, let us know, if we can get them signed up, I'll be there, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And before we move on to our next presentation, just as a point of order, those that would like to speak during public comment, please fill out a form over there for public comment and hand it to Mrs. Hernandez, and as our agenda stands right now, we've got two areas for public comment, the first one is limited to our agenda items, and the second public comment, a little bit later on the agenda, is for open public comment, so next on our agenda under information and presentations is Mark Fonsuela.
Good evening, Mr. President, I have presentations, may I have permission to pass those out?
Sure.
Mr. President, for the record, my name is Mark Fonsuela, I serve as the advisor to the school district, financial advisor on your bond program, I also want to take a moment, with me in the audience is George Williford out of our Dallas office with Hilltop Securities, he's our managing director, I'll be as brief as possible, this item relates to item six D on your action item, which is, and for simplicity's sake, it's an intent resolution for the district to start moving forward on the issuance of its next tranche of bonds of five million dollars, and I'll, and I'll take you through the details of that, what that intent resolution does is just announce to the public that at your following meeting, you'll take action on a bond parameters resolution that will define really the terms of the bonds, not the specific terms, it'll provide a range for that called parameters for those terms, and then subsequent to that, there will be a sale of bonds in June, and then we'll return back to this board with the actual terms of a market sale, I'll take you through that calendar, this is the first step in that process today, which is again, the intent or the authorizing resolution for the issuance of bonds, so let me, if I can just jump you in this presentation to slide eight, and as you're moving through those pages, you're going to find information about Hilltop Securities, which is the firm that both George and I represent, Hilltop Securities is the leading financial advisor to local governments and school districts in the country, based out of Dallas, I operate out of Albuquerque, and we also have an office in El Paso, and I say that to you just because we're very close by to the district, so we're available really at a phone call or be at a meeting whenever you need to be, or whenever we need to be, slide eight talks about the assessed valuation or the property tax values within the school district's boundaries, and what we provided here for you is a five-year history, broken down by the key components that produce the revenue for the district, so on the left-hand side, you'll see the residential market values from 2013 to 2017, in the middle, the non-residential or the commercial and industrial, and then finally, in this district, there's something unique here for property tax, which is copper production, which you're paid on as well, as a contrast or corollary, you might see something in Hobbs, New Mexico is an example, the Hobbs Municipal School District for oil and gas, copper is a similar equivalent here in this part of the world, if I could point you just to 2017, you'll see that the total valuation dropped slightly in this district by about one percent, but you'll notice that actually values under residential were actually quite robust, they increased by three point one six percent, the declines are really in the, on the non-residential, and then there's some decline in copper production as well, the assessed valuation figure, and if I could take you now to slide nine, it's really the basis for determining in New Mexico what the, what the amount of bonds that a school district can move forward to ask voters of, and the constitution limits And the constitution limits that for school districts, so in this case, school districts are limited to, to 6% of the assessed valuation. I'll take you through what that 6% looks like in just a moment. On slide nine is just the, the actual property tax rates that payers here within this district pay, they see this on their property tax every year. So the one that I want to point out to you specifically is the column named debt. So this is a specific property tax rate that is restricted and segregated into a separate account, specific to the bond payments that we're gonna be talking about here shortly. So in other words, it does not come out of your operating budget, and, and the money is specific to pay debt back for this district. And so you'll see that historically, this district has kept their mill levy or property tax rate, right, in, at about the 2.5% to 2.5% range on average. And the communication that this board and administration, administration had with the voters on the election was that you would seek to maintain that level. In other words, you would not increase tax rates for these bond issues. Let me tell you why, why that would be true in the next couple of slides. So if I can jump you to slide 10. The election occurred in 2017, the, the question to the voters was requests for $20 million authorization of bonds, and the plan was to sell 5 million of those bonds each year for the next four years. We did the first issue last year, and the idea of the 5 million was to time the, the delivery of bond money to when the district was ready to construct projects throughout the district. So, and again, and I think that ties in with your capital improvement plan and the program there. So we're now on the second tranche of this issuance. On the right-hand side in the table, you'll see that, as you look down in the middle of that table, the 6% constitutional limit, in other words, what is your, your bonding capacity for the district? It's 34 million total then, based on the assessed valuation. Now, as your assessed valuation grows, that capacity grows as well. So, as an example, if the district chose to go out for more bonds, they could go to voters at the next election and ask for up to their, their remaining capacity. So what we would do in that case is deduct out the 20 million that they've already approved, and take the difference. So that's really what your capacity offers you. It's another way of saying that in this 2017 election, you didn't ask voters for your full capacity. So you were respectful, that's an editorial word, excuse me, but you were mindful of not going after the full capacity or increasing property tax. So moving forward, slides 11 and 12, we've prepared a pro forma for you on just what this might look like, the next bond issuance. Of course, knowing that interest rates change every day, and so there could be minor changes to this structure, what you're seeing on 11 is the existing debt for last year's bonds. And you'll note that in year one, or in year 2018 in this case, there's a very high principal payment, 1.265 million. And we've done that so that we can, again, achieve that 2.5 mil property tax rate and leave it at, right at that level. It's also a benefit for the district because you pay a significant amount of your principal off quickly. And so that's a strong credit factor when bond rating agencies look at the district's debt. So we'll continue to, to implement that policy on the next issue. So in the middle, on the green section there of that column, you can see that we've structured this so that the first payment will be due when we issue these bonds in 2019, and that first principal payment's 975,000. So putting all of that together, and we're issuing 20-year bonds, which is the legal maximum in New Mexico, that you can sell these bonds for the legal length, the maximum length. So when you look at that graphically on slide 12, you'll see that as we layer in the debt, so the blue, the blue bar charts there are showing this proposed issuance that you're starting today. And then the following year, we'll add in bar charts that spiked to the top in 2020, and then one that spikes in 2021, and then it'll level off at some amount lower than where you see now. In other words, you'll still have some capacity going forward if the district chose in 2022, as an example, to go back to voters and ask for their support again, and still maintain that promise, which is to not increase the mill levy or the property tax rate greater than 2.5 mills. So that's why we structure it the way we have it in place. Slides 13 and 14 detail the finance calendar that we're pursuing at this point. Today is the authorizing resolution, and so again, if you approve that item, we'll start moving forward down the rest of the calendar here. And again, I'm gonna jump around to dates here, a lot of this is the inside baseball associated with issuing bonds. Your, your staff will be very busy over the next couple of months, working on offering documents and some of the legal documents associated with putting together a bond issue, which you'll see at board meetings, you'll have a chance to review those. But the next key item for, for you all will be May 21st, when we'll bring back that parameters bond resolution for you. That'll be the longer document that'll really outline the, the general legal structure, the pledged revenues of the transaction. And then on June 11th, and this could change, on June 11th, we would plan to sell the bonds, and sell them out to the, the public market, and then return here on June 18th to take final action so that you can see what those terms would be on those bonds, and then start moving forward on the closing process. So a couple of years ago, the state legislature passed something that's pretty important to school districts and to local governments when they're issuing debt. They created this authority to do what's called delegated authority on bond issuances, and this resolution with your support will include that in there. And what that allows is the president of the board or superintendent to sell the bonds outside of a normal board meeting timeframe. The reason why the legislature passed that was because school districts previous to that had to sell their bonds within 48 hours of a board meeting. And so schools were left with potentially poor market times to sell those bonds. So the delegated authority allows you to, to get out to the market when your advisors feel like it is the right time to get the lowest possible interest cost, transact that on behalf of the district, and then have the president or the superintendent sign up on that transaction, with then a report at your next bond, at your next board meeting on what the details of the transaction are. That all happens within parameters, which is the next, which is the May 21st item that we'll be bringing to you. So it's not as if the board president or the superintendent would take action on anything that, like an interest rate is an example, that would be in, area, it would exceed the parameters of that bond resolution. So as an example, if the parameters say that the maximum interest rate would be 5%, and the market actually comes in at 5.5%, there would not be legal authority to transact that deal. We would have to come back to the board and redo the, the resolution so that the parameters met, met the, the terms of the deal. So again, it still gives the board a lot of control over how the transaction happens. So finally, on the calendar, we anticipate closing the transaction on June 29th, and that's the day that the district would have money for its projects. So you would get transferred 5 million to your account so that you can move forward on those projects. Let me finish my comments briefly by just taking you through some of the market information that we have. Slide 22, and the rest of it, I'm hopeful that you'll read this evening, maybe help you go to sleep about Hilltop and, and why we're number one in the business. Slide 22, the top left-hand corner, it's a representation of the yield curve, and this is just the risk reward calculation for investors. And what you're seeing here is, over time, you have three curves there on three specific dates. And over time, what we've seen is that interest rates for a 20-year financing have stayed relatively the same. I mean, there's been some upward increase in that. What we're seeing with interest rates rising is really the front end or the shorter interest rates, like the one and the two and the three-year timeframes are increasing. What that means to us is, we feel like, like interest financing for the school districts is gonna be very strong. This is a, in New Mexico, school districts are backed by the state of New Mexico through the New Mexico Credit Enhancement Program, which takes you up to a double A plus rating. So in our view, you'll be trading very closely to triple A rating, which is the best in the market, and the opportunity to, to lower your financing cost is strong, from our view. And again, what we've seen in the current quarter, first quarter of the year is that issuances of bonds have, the, the volume just nationwide has, has reduced about in half for various reasons. And in New Mexico, there's not a lot of bonds or paper out there from New Mexico issuers. So what we know is that investors are pretty motivated to see New Mexico paper, to diversify their portfolio of holdings. So again, from our view, the market's strong for a bond offering from a great credit like, like Silver Condals Consolidated School District. So with that, let me stop, let me open myself up for questions if you have any, and if not, I'll, I'll remain to, to be in the audience until you get to item 6D and answer questions there as well.
Very well, any questions from the board?
I have just a simple question, maybe it's just a clarification, but on page 10, you put the assessed valuation on the bond capacity, if it grows, what did you mean by going back and having our voters vote as if we needed an increase, or?
If, if you chose to, it's, it's simply to show that you're not currently taking up all the capacity. Other districts would take their 100% capacity. So right now, you have 34 million available to you, if voters approve that. Voters have approved 20 of that 34, and you've sold 5 of that 20. So you have 15 remaining, but you even have greater capacity than that, if you chose to go back to a bond, through a bond election.
Makes sense, thank you.
Did you also say we could maintain their tax levels at a later date with additional issuance?
Absolutely. In four years, if you chose to go back to voters, part of my role and part of George's role is to make sure that you can fit capacity within that, that revenue structure that, that maxes, maximizes at 2, 2.55 mills.
Right.
So yes, absolutely. I feel comfortable that, that we could make sure that you didn't go above that tax rate.
It's a good reminder, I think we thought we used all our money already.
We're having enough fun there.
What?
We're having enough fun.
Questions from Mr. Brown?
No, sir.
Great, well, thank you. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Bustillos.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
Well, it's that time of year, it's bargaining season, and so we are in full swing with that, as are many of our other NEA affiliates across the state and the country. We are finally getting our agendas and things planned, and so we have meetings scheduled through May to talk about the things that each of us are gonna bring to the table, so we're looking forward to that. It seems to be starting off well, you know, we just, it's gonna be on a week-by-week basis as we continue to negotiate some of the items. It is good to hear, you know, how things are working and moving in the district, and that's always good to hear. Of course, we're not perfect, and we do have issues that are being worked out and will be worked out, so we are looking forward to cooperation, you know, to get everything settled and, so we can keep our district moving forward positively, and that's about where we are. So, questions?
Questions from the board?
Mr. Brown? No, sir.
Okay, thank you guys.
Very well, thank you.
That was so short, right?
Next on our agenda this evening, under information to the board is Superintendent, Mr. Brown?
Mr. President, members of the board, members of the community, I'm going to give an update from the last board meeting we had regarding the gym floor. There are two questions regarding the air system, basically is what it would be, and whether it was covered under the claim for the La Plata Middle School, as well as the installation of the same system in Cliff. Mr. Barry Ward, Director of Maintenance, shared via an email, saying, "La Plata Middle School system is already part of the claim and will cost the district nothing. In Cliff, I have planned on installing the same system, and it is included in the purchase order we have issued for that work. Its cost is approximately $5,000."
Any questions from the board? Thank you. Continue on its threat assessment site improvement requests.
As we continue, there was a safety and security meeting held last Tuesday, and every school campus had submitted a threat assessment, and they have been turned over to Mr. Ward has been, as has been discussed earlier. It's gonna be in different phases. In the first phase, it's going to be where, within the town limits, the schools are gonna have a wall off and door access into the campus where kids will be. Mr. Ward is planning on having the glass as bullet resistant, and there will be electronic locks on the doors. There was a discussion, as far as Cliff, it being difficult to implement the same type of system, and so the discussion centered around having a fence installed around the entire campus in Cliff. And some of the staff members in Cliff have expressed some concern, so that is something that's going to be on a continuing, a continual discussion basis.
Anything else on those requests at this time?
Not at this time, no, sir.
Questions from the board?
Question that I have on, you mentioned the, I think, security glass, is that something that would require that the glass in certain areas be replaced, or is there a film that would be put over the top of that, or is that yet to be determined?
That's yet to be determined, determined, but the 1-6 Street in particular would probably have to be replaced if it is going to become that bullet resistant type of glass.
Okay.
And is that every window, or?
It's the entrance to the building.
Entrance.
Very well, next on information to the board for Mr. Brown is update on the tobacco
If you will recall, we had a presentation by one of our high school students regarding helping schools be tobacco-free 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 24/7, and this was the particular handout that they shared with us. We did share it with our Policy Services Company through the New Mexico School Boards Association, and the response that we did receive is as follows. "Policy Services does not add content or make corrections until the district board approves those changes, and we are notified of the exact changes by strikeout and underlined additions to the policy being corrected. It is my observation that the material you have attached does not give citations as to mandated requirements of state or federal law and rules. You need to ask for the legal citations and content justifying the changes suggested. The organization likely also provided you with one policy containing their proposed changes in a format similar to that of Policy Services. If you check your policy, ADB slash ADC, you will find there are seven policies regarding drugs and tobacco that have been adopted by Silver. Additionally, it is Policy Services' policy opinion that the seven policies are in keeping with the mandates and requirements of the state and federal laws and rules governing school districts. As to the list of changes you provided in your communication, the more specifics you put into a policy, other than those required by law, the more likely you are to violate your own policy." And he stresses, "I do not recommend you proceed with the changes."
Questions from the board?
I just, because I'll be looking at policies as we move forward, and I just, I think one of the things that we're gonna run into, the people that help us with our policies, I think they're gonna be very hesitant to make many changes, and understandably, we don't wanna be violating our own policies, so they're gonna wanna keep them more generic. But I think as we move forward, it can be some, the, the one fear I have is when we have very generic policies, there's no consistency as far as the action we take if there is a violation. And so that may be something that we look to address in our handbook, so that our, our policies are one thing, but then our handbooks, when we look at them, are very, very consistent.
And more specific, yes.
And more specific, yeah. Because I think that's, that's part of- Because I think that's, that's part of the issue, is the consistency in enforcement. Because you can have whatever policy you want and say whatever you want in a handbook, but if you don't enforce it consistently, it means nothing.
And I believe that, that information, was that shared with all the, that email, shared with the board members? Was that just?
I believe it was sent to Ms. Hernandez, Carpe Carpe, to be.
Okay. Make sure we can get that out, if it wasn't shared with everybody, we'll get his opinion out to everybody as well.
I'd agree.
Anything else, Mr. Brown, on information to the board?
Not at this time, no, sir.
Very well, thank you. Next on our agenda is Mrs. Milam, district updates.
Mr. President, members of the board, we are still waiting for the REEDS-to-LEEDE application to be released, and what we are going to do is try to apply for some reading coaches at the elementaries. That's our goal for that grant. I did finish the pre-K grant, and I, it has been submitted two weeks ago, and these are, we wrote it for 80 students for the whole district, and these are for kids that have to be four by September 1st. And the three-year-olds would still go to Head Start El Grito program. So we're just waiting to hear, we're hoping to hear by the 1st of May.
And how many students did you say?
Eighty.
Eighty? Any questions from the board? Mr. Brown?
No, sir.
Anything else, Mrs. Milam?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is Mrs. McCain, financial reports. Do you want to go over those now or during our consent?
Yeah, I think during the consent.
Okay.
Just when we do the checks written. I, myself and Martha Arvarez, our comptroller, went to the spring budget workshop this year. It was the 4th, 5th, and 6th of April, and we got there to get the financial information for, you know, the kickoff to the new year. We were met with the good news of an increased unit value. Our unit value is, for this year, set at $4,159.23. That is up $75 from, close to $75 from last year, and that is to cover some of the mandates that, you know, you heard Mr. Howie Morales talk about, you know, one of the mandates was the tier increases for the teachers, you know, so that the minimum salaries for a Level 1 teacher will go to the $36,000, Level 2 teacher is $44,000, and Level 3 teacher is $54,000. Those are in statute now, so we must make sure that every one of our salary schedules is aligned to meet those standards. We also, in the Senate bill that they passed, along with those tier increases, there is a 2.5 average salary increase for teachers, and that is on top of the tier increases. That has been explained to us over and over by different areas of the public ed department. And so that's going to account for a larger increase than a 2.5, average 2.5% increase, because we have to fix those tiers and then give those increases on top of them. So the average teacher increase is going to be somewhere between 4.25% and 4.5%, depending on where they sit on the current salary schedules. And they also mandated that we have, give a 2% average of 2% increase for our, all non-teaching staff, that goes from the IAs to the nurses to custodians, business office personnel, administrators. And we had a meeting with our administrators not too long ago, and Mr. Howie Morales also alluded to that, in which our Silver Schools administrators agreed to take a smaller percentage increase so that the other staff could take, get the 2.5% that's being afforded to all of our teachers as well. So everybody but the, people on the administrative salary schedule will receive a 2.5 average of 2.5% increase, and then the administrators will get a 1.25% increase for them. And that was a decision that they agreed to so that they could allow the other staff to see a more benefit of this mandate that was, you know, given by the state. Along with the good news was a little bit of bad news, too. Our medical insurance premiums are going to go up 4%, and so that's 4% of the premium. Everybody kind of associates that with the salary increase. The premium is still a large number, but it's not your whole salary, but it's going to be a 4% increase, and that hits both sides, the employees and the employer, because we share the cost of those premiums. The information that we received from the Public Schools Insurance Authority is that they are negotiating consistently and trying to get a better deal for us, but because we're self-insured and because our self-insured group is in a rural area, you know, everybody in Albuquerque has a different rate because they themselves are separately self-insured from the rest of the state of New Mexico and the education employees, and most of that, that leaves most of those people in rural areas where they don't have the competitive, the competition to drive down the cost. And so that's why we're seeing those increases hit us harder. When, if you talk to somebody in Albuquerque, they're probably not seeing the same increase, but they have access to a bigger group of competitive, you know, medical practitioners. It's something that, you know, because of the nature of where we live, that's something that we have to deal with. They try to get us a better price and better coverage, but everything in medicine right now seems to be going up on the cost side of things, and so we just have to try to live within our means and deal with what we have for our coverages. They talked about dental going up, but they said this year they were able to maintain the costs, so that's probably something we're going to see next year, is that our dental premiums will increase. We were also hit with our NIPSA risk insurance, even though it had nothing to do with any of the consideration for armed guards and all of that, our insurance is going up $62,000 from last year, and that is an unfunded mandate, along with the medical insurance premiums. Those are all mandates that, you know, we have to follow through with, but we're not being funded to cover them. So everybody thinks, "We got a lot of money, we got money for raises." Well, they don't actually go in and calculate exactly how much you're going to need for raises, they give you an estimate, and you have to work with that because it's state statute, so you have to pay what they say to pay. You just have to find magic in the other parts of your budget to come up with, you know, and cover those, you know, because they are funding part of the mandate, but not always all of the mandate. And so those were the things that we saw in the spring budget workshop. I had my first budget meeting, I think shortly after our last board meeting, and basically what I went through is to kind of give people an overview of what we're looking at, what we face. At the time, we were looking at a number of, we were down 157 students, and so we were estimating a cost that that was going to come out of our budget of $1,050,000. Right now, in looking at the SCG and our other revenues, it's looking like we're going to have, be down about $750,000, you know, and considering any changes and other things that are happening, I mean, we have to look at, you know, if we do implement the security, you know, staff, how much that's going to cost, how far, you know, are we going to go? Are we going to have them at every location? All of those things have to be considered in building this budget so that we can, because we have to pass a balanced budget, or it's considered non-compliant, that we did not pass a budget at all. If it doesn't balance, they don't want to see it, and they will build it for us. So we have to get to the point where all of our revenues match all of our expenditures and be able to maintain that for the next four years. That's what I have.
Questions from the board?
I do have questions. And you're like, and we just had a meeting today. So the insurance, when you say it's, let's just do an example. So let's say it's $100 for someone, which I know that's not true. Is it going up to $104, which the district will share between the employee and the employer?
Right.
That is correct.
Right.
Okay. So it's not like an 8% overall?
No, it's 4% on the premium, and I'd say probably 70%.
And then it depends on how you pay, like 80, 20, or?
Yeah, it's 40, 60 for our district, yeah.
And then on that insurance, you, I don't, I'm not sure that I understand it correctly. So we are self-insured just within Silver Schools?
No, within the New Mexico Public Schools Insurance Authority, which is every school district except APS. And for APS, it's more beneficial to them to be outside of our network, because they have access to all of the doctors in the city, and they can drive down their costs by negotiating separate from us, because we're dealing with the doctors that are in rural areas that don't have the volume and the finances to offer us a little bit lower cost, because there's not the competition.
Okay, so then they're looking at all of those costs throughout the state of New Mexico, with the exception, with no Albuquerque in there?
Right.
And figuring out how much it's costing them, and that's what they're basing these, supposedly basing these increases on?
Right.
Okay. So they should be able to zero in on where the cost is, but they won't differentiate this district versus that district, everybody?
Right, because there are mitigating circumstances that cause those, you know, that drive those costs up. You know, if we had, I remember when I first came into doing the benefits for the school district, we had what they called, it was the $10 million baby. It was a baby that was born premature, that was on all kinds of medications, all kinds of different machines and stuff, and I think for the first probably year and a half of its life, they were, if the baby was in the hospital, you know, and that was all on, you know, our self-insured cost. Well, we're generating those dollars, and sometimes it has to be directed towards, you know, a smaller group rather than looking at, you know, what overall, you know, because everybody looks and goes, "Well, I don't have that many doctor's visits, and I don't have that much." But if you have a few people, you know, and especially in New Mexico, one of the things that they pointed out to us is diabetes weighs really heavy on our insurance system. We have a lot of the health issues, heart, it's, heart and diabetes, I think, were the ones that they listed as the driving factors for the increases in costs.
So I would hope that at some point, whenever it no longer makes sense for us to be self-insured, that they would look outside, you know what I mean?
We have looked at it, and because it is so, the competition isn't there in these rural areas, it's hard to come up with something better.
Okay.
Because people have tried to break away from the New Mexico Public Schools Insurance Authority, but you find out that you're a very small fish battling in a big pond of water, and they're not successful.
I just wonder if NIPSA could just say, "Okay, you guys pay us, but we're going to, we're going to go with this provider," or X.
And that's what they're doing, they're according to.
They are looking at that?
Yes.
Okay, good.
They, I think their contracts are every two years with like Blue Cross and Loveless or whomever that they're contracting with, they revisit those every two years to try to see if they can find a better deal for us.
Okay. This is what we've got?
Yes.
Okay.
Other comments?
I would just comment from the provider end of that, that they're working to provide less reimbursement on a provider level and cover less as far as services for the patients. And so I think, you know, we're hard-pressed to have some accountability, because I think when you get into these bigger entities, there's a bureaucracy that goes with that and some assumptions made, and so I think they're.
The insurance is making the money.
There's, there's some moneymakers in there, and I wouldn't say that they're passing that buck to the people providing the service, and I think they're going to have to look in their own pockets.
I agree.
That, that wasn't very cordial.
Thank you, Dr. Diaz. Any other comments?
Yeah, decide.
Mr. Brown?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. McCain. Next on our agenda this evening is Board of Education, Finance Subcommittee Report.
I get to talk again about the same thing. She basically touched on most everything that we discussed this morning at our Finance Committee meeting. I was phoned in, text, due date is tomorrow, so I was just slammed. I think I was telling people at my office what to do when I was on the phone, but I think we had a very successful meeting, we worked through the reports, we had some questions, our questions got answered. I appreciate whoever arranged to have me phoned in, that was great. Like she said, our unit value is going up for next year. It also went up this year. We had a huge decline in enrollment, we thought we were going to be looking at like a million-dollar deficit. We are down about $450,000, so that was some good news. It's still a negative, but not quite as much of a negative. She mentioned the 75 up from last year, she talked about the tier increases. I actually had another question, but we'll talk about that later. Where we are sitting right now at operational is very close to 4%, which is where the state likes us to be in cash reserves. 4% of our $23 million budget is about $1 million. So we're sitting at that right now. There is some expenses that are unencumbered and not able to be budgeted for just yet, and those are our spring sports, we'll have an April payment, and then year-round coaches will have a May payment, so some of those may or may not be in there. I think it's safe to say we'll be sitting right around 3%, and at almost a half a million-dollar deficit, I would say that we're doing really well with budgeting our funds. Did I miss anything?
Just the carryovers help.
The carryovers did help and the increased unit value, yeah. So, I think that's all I have.
Questions from the board? Very well, thank you. Next on our agenda is the Safety and Security Subcommittee Report. Mr. Flores?
I will try to talk, pardon my voice. I just torture myself because I still sit at baseball games and coach my daughter's softball team, but we've had a couple of meetings, and I'll just get to the, to the points that are important. We basically had a meeting, and what I discussed with the committee is that if we didn't want to proceed forward with armed security guards, then we can let it go and move on to more progressive issues that the school needs, because we had some negative comments, bits and pieces that someone was going to make out financially, we're doing this underhandedly. Whatever comments were, they'd come to our attention, Mr. Brown and myself. So at this latest meeting, every school was represented there, except La Plata, and we took a vote, and it was voted unanimously that we move forward with the armed security guards. Now, this is like everything else. If we have money to proceed, we'll proceed. If we don't, we can't proceed. But we've met with security guards that are working right now, and even if we do one school at a time, we'll proceed that way. We met with Chief Reynolds and the Sheriff's Department. They cannot provide a school resource officer. They said, just crystal clear, they don't have the funding or the manpower to provide for a school resource officer, not even with the 50/50 matching salary pay. And if they did, if they did have the resources, they would provide one officer for eight schools, that's it. And that's coming straight from Chief Reynolds. There are no armed security contractors in Silver City, so we're faced with the third option to go with that option. And we are installing the bulletproof walls, we met with Mr. Ward. Every school is going to get some infrastructure improvements between now and the beginning of next year. Every school's going to get some new radios. So we are taking progressive steps to keep the schools safe. Mr. President, that's all I have right now with my voice, sorry.
Thank you.
Last time for any questions?
Any questions from the board? Dr. Diaz?
I just, mainly one, I guess clearly I would prefer to have it outsourced to people doing it all the time, rather than it be on our back, and so I'm just curious, would they even explore if, say, we went 60/40 or 70/30?
No. Ed Reynolds said he wouldn't, because he doesn't have the manpower, and even he checked the COPS grants, it's a COPS, it's the name of the grant, COPS. They just could not incur the cost after the grant ran out. We talked to him extensively, Mr. Brown and myself. Sheriff's Department was in the same boat. Sheriff's Department was in the same boat. You mentioned earlier, we are about the responsibilities we are gonna have to take on. And that's true. We are sort of reinventing the wheel with the exception of we're getting retired officers that have these hundreds, if not thousands of hours of training that the school doesn't have to provide. And that's how they are insured. And I got that from Ken McPherson, who head security at. Oh, Christian. He's a retired state police sergeant. I reached out to him and he only hires retired officers that left in good standing. And that's how the state, the school insurance will insure that officer because of their past training. And they prove that they were a certified officer. But I think he only retired, hires retired state police officers. And obviously, we know who was in the state police and who wasn't. However, any officer with the credentials that we are looking for would be looked at. And yeah, they have all that training. So we won't have to reinvent the wheel in that aspect. And that one coordinator will have to keep their training records, their scores, their classes that they've attended. And Mr. Brown and I, it's his idea. He brought up an excellent idea for the coordinator position. And I'll let him discuss if he wants to. But that is the easiest way than going out and hiring somebody that has no experience. Because then we are really liable, what experience does this person have? And like I mentioned before, we also want to protect our schools from the inside out. We don't want somebody armed in a school that doesn't have prior training as a potential threat in that school.
I guess one other thought I had. Was that if there was a model, so like in schools, there's a shortage of teachers. So now we're rehiring people after one year and they still have to pay into, say, retirement, but you're not responsible for paying the retirement. I'm just wondering if there could be a model at that level where we could bring back the retired police officers where they would pay into retirement, but we wouldn't have to incur the cost of the retirement. We'd still incur the cost of those, say, the medical benefits. And basically, sort of following the lead in the education community where that would be an option. And I don't, I don't know the answer to that. But, I mean, basically, they would be the ones doing that hiring that we would be doing here, but they would incur less cost and still have the same people we're hiring. But they wouldn't have the cost of the benefits. And that would significantly decrease the cost to them. I don't know.
That's an idea. I think that came out as a, it has to be something through the state, right? The state instituted that whole, teachers can come back after a year.
And anything involving a retired PERA employee as well is already, there are circumstances and setup with ERB to accommodate those people, whether they have to pay their portion or the school has to pay, you know, just our portion of the retirement. And they don't pay because they don't receive benefit of it either.
That's, that's what I do right now. Is Western pays their portion, but I don't pay my portion because the state won't let me retire twice.
So they get no benefit in the retirement. They get active paid, but the retirement does not increase. It does not impact the retirement.
So I just thought maybe if it falls under that umbrella.
Yeah.
Then it's already been written and it's just, it's less cost.
No, not for us. Because we pay the same amount that we do for every other employee. As if they are employees of the district, then even though they don't have to pay their portion of the retirement, silver schools would still have to pay the 10.9 or 13 point.
So, so that's, that's what Eddie does then? So Western, like in Eddie's case, Western still pays their portion.
Yes, yes.
So it's no less cost to Western.
Because like Steve Geary, he's been our employee for 20 years, I think.
Yes.
As a security person.
Yes.
And those rules have evolved and changed. When it first started, we didn't have to pay anything towards his retirement and he didn't have to pay anything. As things have changed and they saw that that wasn't quite efficient for our retirement fund, we now have to pay our portion just like he's an active employee. But he doesn't have to pay anything because he doesn't receive any benefit of it. It's just keeping the fund liquid. By us continuing to pay in those dollars.
Okay, so that wouldn't work.
So the cost is gonna be on the school side no matter what.
Or on the.
If they're employees.
Police department, yeah.
One of the, a couple of questions that I have in regards to the armed SRO. If the police, if the silver police department and the sheriff's department are currently understaffed, how, how would, I mean, are there folks out there that are willing to be employed? And I mean, is there a pool out there? There's retired folks, but would they be interested in coming back? Did they get out of the police department and looking for other work now? Or, I mean, is there a pull there? Because it sounds like there's a need at both the sheriff's department and the silver police department.
Well, right now, retired officers can't go back to work for a PERA department without suspending their retirement. So when you retire, there is a pool. There is a pool. Because there are officers out there that retired and they're still in their early 40s. So they do have a lot of shelf life. And I have done a survey and there are a pool of officers that would like to come back to a job like this because it's straight days, there's no shift work involved. And.
The time off is amazing.
The time off, yes. And it's not gonna be a school resource officer, Mr. President, because a school resource officer will deal with other issues in the school. Such as fights, drugs, theft, anything like that. This officer will be a security officer that deals with a threat coming into the school. And that's the difference between the two. Because if we into the, if we did have a school resource officer, then that officer is subject to what his department wants him to do before us. So if he has court, he has other duties as assigned by the chief, those come first before our duties. And that's been my experience in dealing with a school resource officer. So this person that we hire or people that we hire will not be school resource officers. They'll be school safety officers. But there is a pool. And like I mentioned with the committee, at some point, that pool is gonna be pulled from. Whether it's Hidalgo, Cobra, Deming, people are making the same moves that we are. And those officers will get over there. But again, I say this, if we do it, that's fine. If the board chooses not to do it, I'm fine with that as well. Because at the end of the day, I, I know what I was pushing for. And that was my best interest is the safety of the students. And I, I don't have anything to gain out of this regardless of which direction we go.
The, the other thing I think would be important for us, I think as a whole, would be able to get some, some document in writing from each of those agencies stating, hey, you know, we've been offered a 50-50 split. We've been offered a 60-40, whatever we would want to offer as a district. And get some sort of documentation that that discussion has taken place. And it is either good or no good, or this is what would be needed to make it good. And then we can proceed. I think that would be important.
Well, we'll make note of that. Lastly, let me, let me add that we have created the Crisis Response and Intervention Committee as well. We did that the last meeting. And we reached out to every school. They have appointed somebody to be on that committee. And Mr. Brown, if I may, the person heading that committee, I forget her name.
Ms. Cindy Ruff.
Ms. Cindy Ruff is gonna lead that committee. And, you know, sort of like the resources that David O'Ginn talked about. If there are students that are in need of resources such as mental health, social issues at home, those students will be identified and referred to that committee. That committee will meet and come up with an action plan to address that student, those students' needs. And hopefully, with red flags coming up or whatever, either one of the committees will address that student and move forward and hopefully give them the help that they need. And they're gonna meet, I think, this week for the first time.
That's correct.
And they'll be meeting regularly as well as we do.
Any other questions in regards to Mr. Flores and the Safety and Security Subcommittee?
Mr. Brown? No, sir.
Very well. Next on our agenda is Board President. And I've got some policies for a first reading. There was some concern from some of the board members regarding our public participation. And why do we have two areas? One area that's limited, public comment, one that's open public comment. The limited public comments towards, I wouldn't say the beginning, but probably halfway, then the open public comments towards the end. So there were some concerns that, you know, why did we have two? Why do we have the definition? So, and looking at our policy, and two policies are there for us to look at. Looking at B-2150, public participation. Looking at that policy, there's nothing that designates or defines that, that we have two separate areas and one be limited and one be open. All I see in this policy is that we have 30 minutes of public comment time on our agenda. And so I wanted just to bring this policy, and it's again, B-2150, public participation at board meetings. And just for review by the board to see if there's any changes if, to this policy. As it currently stands, I think the issue was having the limited and the open and having these two separate kind of definitions of public comment. And I don't see anything in this policy that, that relates to that concern. Comments and questions from the board?
So basically, our policy never changed to limited?
Well, it's, it's not defined in this policy. But if you look at the other policy listed here, B-1700 Agenda, that's where I believe the, the change in policy was made. Our agenda reflects these items for our regular board meetings. And the first one's open public comment for 15 minutes. The second one, or I'm sorry, the. First one is limited public comment for 15 minutes and then open public comment for 15 minutes. So I just wanted to put that out there. If, in my opinion, I don't, I think it's this policy that we would need to revise. And we could have as a first reading tonight, if you were concerned about those definitions. We could leave it as is, but strike the limited in the first part of the agenda and leave it open public comments 15 minutes. And then still have the one after our action items. Because I think what the intent was, was if the public wanted to comment on an item before action was taken, they had an opportunity to do so before action was taken. If they wanted to comment after action was taken, they could comment after action. So I think that was, in some ways, why that was, that was changed. But what are your thoughts and comments there?
I would say that we just strike the limited. And they can comment on whatever they like.
On anything.
The other suggestion that came up informally was, do we want to change the timeframe? Like do 20 minutes for the open public comments up front and only 10 at the tail end? Because most people don't want to sit through the entire board meeting and then comment after action. That's pretty rare. And so sort of redistributing the time for more upfront, 20 at the front end and just 10 at the end. I think it made sense. You guys don't want to sit here all night to make a comment.
And that's the, really, the only detail in the other policy on public participation is, is that under 2150, it is the third bullet point. The Board Presidents shall be responsible for recognizing speakers, maintaining proper order, adhering to the time limit of 30 minutes for all presentations and a maximum of five minutes per speaker. In order to ensure that each individual has an opportunity to address the board, the President may also set a time limit of less than five minutes for individual speakers based on the length of the commentary and number of requests received. That's the only. So if we put 20, allow 20 minutes at before action on our agenda instead of 15 and then left 10 minutes in the after action items for, and change them both to open public comments, is that acceptable?
Switch to 20, is that what you said?
20 and 10, the way we divvy it up.
The first opportunity be 20 minutes. And change, strike limited, make that open. And then the second opportunity for open public comments would be worded the same, but would be 10 minutes.
I really liked that idea.
And that, this will be our first reading for that policy. B-1700 under the agenda. And then the next board meeting, we'll have it for a second reading and adoption. Any other comments, Mr. Brown?
No, sir.
Members of the board?
And then it would go into effect in our June meeting.
Then it would go into effect the following meeting. Very well, which reminds me, this is our first Monday board meeting. And so welcome, everybody, on a Monday as opposed to a Tuesday. Which I'm glad we changed because I would be able to attend tomorrow. Next up on our agenda are board comments. And I'll, I'll speak first. Couple other in regards to the safety and security on the infrastructure items. I would like to see, me personally, I would like to see that those items be brought before the board. And to, in some degree, for at least review, if not approval. Just to, because I think those, those items were, are gonna be using bond money. And so I think that it would be good at least for the board to review those items. And I know some of those items, maybe we don't want to disclose to the public. And maybe we could, we could work around that to some degree. If there's some sensitive areas that, that we're making changes to that we don't want the public to know. I think as a whole, though, they need to be brought before the board to be reviewed. And then also, you know, it's gonna be X amount of dollars and we're pulling it from, from bond monies or diverting it from what originally was gonna be used for facility upgrades for security. So that was one item I think would be good. At least me as an individual would, a board member would like to see on those infrastructure requests, about before the board. Thank you, Mr. Flores, for your work on that committee. I know it's been fast and kind of furious to some, some degrees and certainly an important aspect of our district and our school. So thank you for your work on that. And, and continue to work together to, to provide a safe and secure school environment. So I appreciate you for that. These next two weeks, so we've got park testing. I know my kids don't really look forward to it, but it's, it's what we got for now and until it changes. And hopefully, if it changes, it changes for the better. So good luck these next two weeks for not only the kids, but also the teachers and the staff that, that have to help implement that, that testing. And I think that's, that's all my comments for, for this evening. And, um, I think that's, uh, that's all my comments for, for this evening.
Ms. Montenegro?
Okay. Um, yeah, I would echo that about approval, but also there may be some HB thirty-three, I don't know the right ones, but there may be-
Carrera S V nine.
Some other funds that might be able to do that security stuff, that stuff that we need to keep private and not approve. Um, yes, again, it's a Monday meeting, and so our Finance Committee meeting is normally the, the Monday before the Tuesday. Well, we did it all in one day, and then we decided next month, maybe we want to do it a day ahead, so that would be like Friday, and then that's graduation. And so, that just reiterates how fast this year has flown by. Um, by the next time we're sitting here in a meeting, all of our seniors will have already graduated. And so I just want to recognize the graduating class of twenty-eighteen at, at Silver High, at OHS, and at Cliff, and just wish you guys well. We're excited to see you and be there and, um, celebrate with you, and we're just so proud of their successes, and thank the teachers from K through twelve that have helped them to get to this point. Um, so, um, I want to recognize the PAT Committee at Silver High School, as well as the administration for putting on a wonderful, um, after-prom night. They used to call it casino night, I don't know why we call it now, after-prom. Um, there was maybe ten or twelve of us that deal tables from twelve to four AM, and kids stayed around and gambled their little lives away and won prizes. And so, um, just a great, um, thing that happens that we do here at, at Silver High specifically, to keep the kids off the roads, not drinking, and safe. Um, we have, we have, we'll have some donations coming up to be recognized, and so I just want to really, really appreciate, um, show our appreciation to those businesses that donate, and the people that volunteer their time from midnight to four AM, because that's not exactly what us adults like to be doing anymore. Um, like I said, graduation is upon us, and then with regards to the park, I have a second grader who is not looking forward to going to third grade because of park. And so I think that's a problem. And then I've got a fifth grader that tells him, "It's no big deal, it's not as hard as illuminate." And so, I mean, it's just, it's just testing, and testing, and testing, and testing, and new testing, and changing testing, and so it's hard on our kids. And I would love to see something that was a little bit more encouraging. Again, I know if it's hard on the kids, it's just as hard on the teachers. So thank you, teachers, for what you do, thank you for helping keep us compliant, thank you for helping show just what our kids know, and helping our school district to be, um, you know, one of the leaders in the state. I believe we got a thing from Mr. Brown that said we're fourteenth in the state. And so that's not something to be, um, and that's something to be proud of. So, um, I just thank everyone that's on the ship, that's, that's turned it around over the last year and a half, and I just look forward to, um, the projects that are coming up with our bond money. Again, we thank the voters, because we couldn't do it without you, and, um, I'll see you May twenty-first, when my daughter will be graduated, so, I'll be dry-eyed by then.
Thank you, Mr. Khan.
Uh, I just wanted to start by, um, I, I had a fifth grader that completed the DARE program, and I, I just wanted to thank the Grant County Sheriff's Department on, um, heading that for the fifth graders. Um, my son was just ecstatic on trying to get his essay done, because he was determined to be the winner. Um, that didn't happen, um, but, you know, they had a lot of fun, it looks like, and they did an awesome little graduation. So, and I believe they do that throughout the whole district, so I just wanted to commend the, the Sheriff's Department on that. Um, I, I believe it natures our, our students, um, to, to acknowledge the, the effects of drugs to their life and how they tie that into their personal life, uh, on, on s- personal, um, situations. Um, again, I wanted to thank the, or congratulate the class of twenty-eighteen. Uh, I, I as well have a graduate, uh, graduating this year. Um, other than that, my kids were bugging me and, and telling me to, to vote on the part, not to vote, to disacumen the, the park test. I told them that's not my authority, that it has to happen. Um, but I told them, they need to do their best and, um, because it's very important. But other than that, um, this year has just came very quick, and I, with that, white hairs come, and I'll probably, you'll probably see me again with a head full of white hairs as being busy with the schools and at work. But other than that, um, that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Dr. Deas?
Uh, I would just, uh, say, uh, it was a pleasant, uh, surprise to see our terms extended. So actually, it's worked out, I've really enjoyed being on the school board so far, being one of the newbies. Um, I won't take up much time, because I really appreciate everybody showing up, and I just, I think it's a really important thing, uh, to us as a board, that we're trying to make this more interactive for people. Um, and we appreciate you taking the time, we know your time's valuable, so we really are trying to, um, make it worth your while, and, and try to make sure that we really sort of extrapolate on some of the issues. I know it makes it a little bit longer, but we're also trying to move a lot of the input toward the beginning, um, to help out with that. So we appreciate your patience. Um, I would just say that we're continuing to try to improve as a school district, and it doesn't happen overnight, um, but I really appreciate everybody's efforts and good attitudes moving forward. Um, I, it affects all of us, and I will just say, in trying to recruit physicians at the hospital and different places, um, one of the first things people look at is what kind of schools do you have? And they, they look at grades, and they look at a lot of things that don't matter. But, uh, I would just say that we're constantly trying to improve every day, and I appreciate, you know, all the hard work from the students and the staff in working toward those goals. Um, there was something, oh, the, the other thing, I need to give, uh, wholehearted credit to the high school. I will just say, um, I think there were some initial confusions regarding transition for the incoming freshmen, um, and parents were allowed to voice their concerns, um, and it spoke a lot to what we're working on as far as an initiative for vertical alignment, meaning that every step of the way, we're really getting our kids ready for that next step, um, and, and the transitions from grade to grade. Um, and I think that helps us to sort of raise the bar over time for our kids gradually, rather than the, the shock factor when they get to different parts, and, and to make them better prepared for college, or, you know, trades, or whatever that may be. So I think ultimately, that's our goal, is to produce quality citizens, um, and I think we're taking those steps slowly. Um, the high school on that note really came back and had a second meeting, and really welcomed input from parents, um, naggy parents, me being one of them. Um, and so I really appreciate the administration kind of backtracking and reevaluating some of the decisions made, um, and, and I think the work is to incentivize, um, not only, you know, every student walking in the door, but really to incentivize, um, kids trying to work harder to better themselves. And so, um, they had revamped some of the curriculum with that in mind, and I was very appreciative. So, uh, I look forward to some more good times and a really fast spring, and, uh, my kids are getting spring fever, so homework is becoming a little bit more of a tooth-pulling experience. Um, but I, I think we just gotta remind them that testing's not the whole story, but definitely to do their best every day. So, thank you guys, though, for coming and participating, I just have to tell you, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Deas, uh, Mr. Flores?
The budget, I think, um, we didn't use none of the bond money for that budget. That was used from a budget that Mr. Ward had, and that, that's the reason they didn't come to the board, because he was expending some of his other funding that he had left over for some of that infrastructure money. And, um, I just want to say thank you to all administrators from the schools, because it has been fast and furious, and they've been very diligent in attending the meetings, giving their input. Without them, we wouldn't have a committee. Also, thank you to Chief Ed Reynolds, Sheriff Raúl Villanueva, and their respective departments. Thank you to the New Mexico State Police. All three law enforcement agencies have been very cooperative with us. Anna Bendover backwards for our requests. And lastly, thank you to the public for being here, I know it's tiring, and, um, thank you for your patience, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. One thing I would like to add, um, I think moving forward to, in regards to safety and security, we should, we should be looking at also, um, professional development for our staff and teachers moving forward, things that we can do, maybe on a, a proactive, um, more of a proactive kind of approach to some of these issues, whether it be bullying or, or something along those lines, you know? We've, we've got the, the app that we're piloting, we're in two schools piling, I think that's good, but still, that's kind of a reactive measure. And I think, so I think some professional development-
We're addressing that.
Would, would be something to good, to see in the future as well.
Definitely have a plan.
Great. All right, very well, um, anything else from board com- board comments?
Mr. Brown? Yes, sir.
Next on our agenda this evening, we've got, um, limited public comment. I do have three requests for comment, um, however, because of our current, um, agenda situation, I think all three of these requests fall under the open public, uh, comment section this evening, so that'll, that'll come up in the second part, and, uh, we'll get to that as just as soon as we can. Um, so moving on, we'll, next on our agenda is action items and our consent agenda, approval of one budget finance purchasing, A through F. And, uh, that, remind me, does that include two, transportation?
Um, transportation's separate.
Separate, okay. So then just our A, uh, one through, A through F. Ms. McCain?
Um, I'll start with, um, approval of our checks written for the month of March. We had a total of two million, three hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred seventy-four dollars and thirty cents in checks that were written in the month of March that I seek approval on. Um, this month under B, the budget adjustment requests, we don't have anything, we haven't received any additional award letters or final allocations from, for any of our, um, federal projects. Um, falling under C, awards of bids and proposals, we had a request for proposal for our C Mar, our construction manager at risk, and we, um, had three, um, offers that, um, came to the table. Um, we went with, um, HB Construction, who was out of Albuquerque, they had the most, at this point, cost-efficient, um, proposal. Because we don't have actual projects to give them, you know, uh, ideas on what the construction that they're gonna move forward with, starting as soon as they start the, the work, we don't have anything set in stone, as having decided, you know, we're gonna build this, we're gonna do these things, they had to go with, looking at our budget and saying what they could do with those monies, given the projects at hand. And so HB Construction was the one that, um, came back with the, the most reasonable offer. Um, under donations, I had, um, three donations that were over the five-hundred-dollar, um, amount that we usually bring to the board. We had two for the after-prom, one was from Silver City Dental, that was for five-hundred dollars, and Freeport-McMoRan donated fifteen-hundred dollars for the after-prom, for which we are very, very much appreciative of, for those children. Um, the Silver City Moose Lodge had a donation for our cheer team of five-hundred dollars that I would also like to, um, say a very hearty thank you for, because so many things that, um, there are, there are that we can purchase for the kids and do for the kids out of our operational budget, and there are so many more things that we can't, and those donations do help us cover those. And so we appreciate it, our community coming together to help our kids. Um, we have our BPA from Cliff that is going to national competition in Dallas, and they have asked for financial, um, assistance above and beyond their fundraising, and, um, we have a standard amount of one-thousand dollars that the board, um, awards to those groups to help them with their travel, meals, any of those things that they need. And so I ask for the, the thousand dollars for our BPA for Cliff, for those students who should be commended. And then, um, item F, conflict of interest disclosures, I have none at this time. So that is my complete list of requests for approval.
Questions from the board?
Uh, just on the awards for business, bids and proposals, we received that in our email today, is that correct?
Yes, Barry's out of pocket, he had surgery-
Okay.
And so that stuff is kind of taking its time getting to us-
Okay.
But, that's why he's not here to speak on anything.
And do we only see the one that we're awarding, or did we see all of them?
Um, on the list were the three-
Bid tabulations.
Offers.
Okay, I see it, perfect.
I'm looking for it now, and I-
Here.
I know it was extras, uh, I think here it is, bids and proposals?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, was it in our board book?
Mhm.
Oh, I see it.
It's under, you have to go back out to like the-
Okay.
The main.
So you are HB Construction?
Yes.
Okay.
Everybody see that addition, it was, uh, isn't it, kind of back on that main page for the board meeting?
Half a million dollar difference, it's a big difference, so, makes you, makes you nervous. Do they know we're in Silver City?
Very well, um, we've got, um, our consent agenda item, A, one, A, C, which, A is financial reports, C's award of bids and proposals, D, donations, and then E, the BPA Cliff National Competition Travel Expenses. Uh, I will entertain a motion to approve those consent items.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda and Approval of Budget Finance and Purchasing, items A through E.
Got a motion to approve Consent Agenda, Consent Agenda items identified, uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Would also like to thank those, uh, folks in the community that donated to our, our programs, so, thank you for that. Any, any additional discussion? Seeing none, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Next on our action items is two, transportation, bus drivers, activity drivers, and feeder routes.
Mr. President, I do not have any action items tonight for transportation.
Thank you, Mrs. McCain, or Mrs. Mylum. Um, next, uh, very well, next on our agenda this evening is consideration and approval of the Cliff Schools twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen calendar. And that calendar is-
Extras.
It's in extras as well.
Equipment.
Mr. Brown, does anybody have any information for the board on that specific calendar?
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Is that built the same way that Silver's does? They have a committee, and then they build it, or do we know? And then we have a recommendation?
I'm seeing yes.
Okay.
Has everybody found that yet? Have you go back to that? Oh, there it is. No, that's-
Do you have to go to the, or back to the, where you're at for this meeting?
Go to the, 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 the. And then down.
Oh, Patrick.
Patrick.
Um, yeah, just look it up.
Just meditation, right there.
Oh, okay.
Because it got out of there.
Yeah. Got Jennifer. Mr. Flores, are you able to-
Yes, sir.
-defund it? So we've got a first day of school of August seventh, looks like in the last day of May twenty-third, no? Yeah, looks like May twenty-third.
Oh, there you are.
Any questions from the board?
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the Cliff calendar for the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school calendar.
So moved?
Got a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any additional discussion?
The only comment I would like to make, Mr. President, is that, uh-
Yes.
I know, um, I don't see it on here, but I know Martin Luther King is not being observed as a, as a holiday, and I know, you know, me, myself was, I was asked at one point, why isn't that holiday recognized like it is across the country, for whatever reason they chose to, but I would just like to make note that I, I, I wish it was being recognized out, out in Cliff, and I, I haven't looked at Silver's, I don't know if Silver's recognizing it.
And the other comment I would have is, for anyone that doesn't go to Cliff, there's no way to know that this is a four-day week, so I don't know if they should put that in the- So I don't know if they should put that in the title, or shade in all the Fridays, or because there are some things that are falling on Fridays, like a, what's a purple? Staff development. And then there's a yellow, parent teacher conferences. So somehow just to, for anyone else that was, you know, interested in going to Cliff Schools, make that clear, that that's a four-day week calendar.
Any other comments? Got a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes to approve the Cliff Schools 2018-19 school calendar. Next on our agenda this evening is pardon me, let me navigate this board book is consideration and approval of the Silver Consolidated Schools 2018-2019 calendar. And the attachment that you see there is the results of the vote from Mr. Alvarez, who had the committee. Calendar A received 63 votes, calendar B, 37 votes, calendar C, 129 votes. Mrs. Hernandez, is that, those different options, I know we saw those, did we see, we saw them last month, but they're not in the board book, are they, the different options? All right, the, and that was, I know Mr. Alvarez isn't here, but that vote was teachers and staff. Is that, is that correct? Does anybody know if that was all employees?
It's all staff.
All staff? So they'd, I would say pretty much overwhelmingly liked the C calendar. In the past, the board has approved the calendar with the majority of vote. Would entertain a motion to approve calendar C.
So moved?
Got a motion to approve calendar C. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Just the same comment, Mr. President.
Martin Luther King?
Yes, I'm disappointed that, in my opinion, I think it reflects negatively on Silver Schools that we don't recognize Martin Luther King as a holiday, like everybody else does.
And my only comment, I know I mentioned it last month, was, you know, Christmas break is pushing three weeks again. And there was a negative, from what the teachers said, there was negative testing results following that big lapse. And so I would just say, you know, make sure that the calendars are meeting our educational needs as well.
Comments are noted? Any other, any additional discussion or comments? Got a motion and a second to approve calendar C, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See, seeing none, that motion passes for calendar C for the next school year. Next up on our agenda is, under action items, is D. Consideration and approval of resolution authorizing preliminary determinations regarding general obligation bonds. And that resolution there is an attachment in your board book. Is anybody able to pull that up and view that? Any questions on that resolution? Mr. Valenzuela has stayed for the duration, any additional questions?
Would you just real quickly clarify again what we, what exactly we're voting on?
Sure.
Just a brief.
Sure. Mr. President and members of the board, the item in front of you is an intent resolution to start moving forward. So what you're voting on is to authorize your staff and Hilltop Securities and Rhodey Law Firm, who services your bond council, to start moving forward on the transaction.
For the next five, five million?
For the next five.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Very well. I will entertain a motion to approve action item D, consideration and approval of the resolution authorizing preliminary determinations regarding the general obligation bonds.
So moved?
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve action item D. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the resolution is approved and passes. Next on our action item list is item E, consideration and approval of the New Mexico School Board's Application, New Mexico School Board's Association 2018 Scholarship Nomination. And this scholarship nomination is due prior to our next board meeting. So I asked Mr. Brown to please ask the principals at the high schools to give us a nominee or two to review at tonight's meeting so we can nominate an individual. Typically, what the board has done in the past when we've done this to avoid naming individual students is we've taken the nominations from each principal and identified them as nominee A, B, C, D. And so that's, Mrs. Hernandez, does everybody have a copy of this, or is this the?
No.
Okay. So what we've got here is our nominations from our high schools. And so we've got two here. And we can label that one. A, B, C, and D. And I'll pass that around.
So we're gonna, we're gonna tell you who we vote?
Well, we, we will entertain a motion to nominate A, B, C, or D.
Just based on names?
Mm-hmm, that's all the information that we have at this time. So once that gets down to Mr. Flores and he's had an opportunity to see those names, then I will entertain a motion to nominate one of those individuals. Just remember?
A, B, C, D. That's not how we normally do it.
What's that, Mrs. McJavel?
Usually they give us the application.
Usually with a little bit more information.
Could Peter maybe present on them, and then is there someone from Cliff that could present on those kids? Just to give us an idea of what we're, I mean, just based on names, it doesn't seem very clear.
That was all the information that we had prior to our, or the information is due prior to the next board meeting, so.
Right.
In the past, there's been a concern about identifying individuals.
Well, they would white them out, like that's how I remember last year.
That's what we did last year. We rewrote their essays or their requirements and then they voted on them. More information. And so I would entertain a motion to nominate an individual listed here.
Mr. President, members of the board, I entertain, well, I make a motion to
Yeah, A.
A. Make a motion to nominate applicant A.
Got a motion to nominate applicant A. Do we have a second? I'll second the motion for applicant A. We've got a motion to approve and a second for applicant A, do we have any discussion?
I would just say this is new to me, but I think it's very hard to make a decision about who's the best candidate for scholarship. And so tonight, it is what it is because you can only move forward with the information at hand. And there's a deadline for the scholarship, the nomination submission. But I think moving forward, if we're going to have this, we probably should have a more structured form format and a deadline for those submissions with information about each candidate. And whether it's whited out and we never see a name and just have letters, I think that's probably the best answer. But it just, I think all those kids have worked hard. And it's hard for me to make a determination about who's the best candidate like this. It just seems a little bit, I mean, we want to give to someone, we don't want the opportunity to pass. But I think moving forward, we'll have to work on that.
I would agree, and that falls on my shoulders. That was something that was presented at the region meeting. And with, with that deadline, and I should have pushed it more at that time to, to get requests from the individual principals out there and back to us so we could review with more information. So that's, that was, or is my fault, and I would say, to avoid missing an opportunity for anybody that this was kind of our, our last, or our only resort at this point.
I think last year, the counselors actually put together a whole packet for us. And that's how it came, because it was an actual, like, application-type thing last year, exactly like you're talking about. It was class rank, GPA, they wrote an essay about themselves. And there, it was all whited out, and we labeled them A, B, C, D. So that's, that's the normal, but
It was in our board.
I'm not sure what, yeah, I'm not sure what happened this year. I wouldn't say that it's all Mr. McMillan's.
No, I wouldn't.
Well, we can, we'll certainly try to get that information moving forward and
It seems like last year, they emailed us too, like this date.
Right, usually Mr., I think Mr. Gien is the one that usually notifies us. And this was done during the, the region meeting, and I don't know if there was another email or not, but.
Then it's our fault because we missed the region meeting too. We'll share the link.
We've got a motion and a second for, to nominate applicant A. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Applicant A has been nominated by the board. Very well, next on our agenda this evening is future meetings and proposed agenda items. Our next scheduled work session and regular board meeting is May 21st. The school law conference is June 8th and 9th in Albuquerque. The leadership retreat for the New Mexico School Board Association is July 13th and 14th in Taos. The annual convention for the New Mexico School Board is December 7th and 8th in Albuquerque. Any comments or discussion on those meetings?
Well, I would just like to, I don't, I don't remember exactly how we did this last year, but I remember at the meeting prior to graduations, we coordinated, we announced graduation times and places, coordinated the board getting there and getting back. And then also, I don't know if there's something that you have to put out that says that we're going to be all together, or if it's just assumed.
We can, we can put out an announcement that there's, that a quorum A is going to be present at those locations during that day. Any other questions or comments on?
We do, so, you want to go to the dates and things? So, May 18th is going to be Cliff and Silver's graduation. Cliff, I believe, is 5:30. Is it 5:30 is what you guys have put, okay. 5:30. Silver's is 7:30. Um, so
OHS is 11?
And OHS would be on Saturday, May 19th at 11.
It's on the 18th.
It's, oh, probably the 18th.
Oh, they're all
The calendar that we have, if I may speak, is Ping, I believe, submitted that at the end of the year. And I have a lot of parents calling me on that. And it says Saturday, but that is, that's wrong. And the beginning of the year, we have a meeting, and we all agreed that graduation was going to be all on Friday. So it should be May 18th, Silver at the Finarts Center at 10 o'clock.
The OHS?
OHS. So all three would be on
At what time?
At 10 o'clock.
Then Cliff, that evening, or early evening?
5:30.
On the 18th, and then Silver at 7:30, is that correct?
They do want to kill us. Just kidding.
It's in the night, not in the afternoon.
Yeah, it is, no, 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 I just knew it was going to be good. Okay. So we should arrive at, OHS's graduation, I think we said about 30 minutes before. So 10:30. And then we'll need to depart here to get to Cliff by
9:30.
9:30.
Is that 9:30?
Thank you.
They do be late if you come in.
Then, yeah, I would have been late. So 9:30 at OHS, board members will depart here at, what, 4:30 to be there by 5:00? Is it about half an hour to Cliff?
Three minutes.
Or less, Mr. Flores is driving. Fifteen minutes.
4:30, and we will be able to all ride together, we'll arrange for a vehicle. So we can all meet here. And then hightail it back in here, Mr. Cop, for 7:30. Hopefully they'll save us a parking spot.
Very well, any other comments or questions on graduation times, dates?
So we're meeting here for OHS to go to the Finarts?
Or just meet at the Finarts Center? We just drive ourselves.
Okay, at 9:30?
Yep.
Okay.
Then we can carpool to Cliff for the graduation and back.
Then we'll be here at 5:30, 4:30.
If any of you plan on attending any of these conferences by the New Mexico School Board Association, please let Mrs. Hernandez know as soon as you can. Very well, next on our agenda is open public comments. And I do have three requests for public comments. The first request is for, from John and Kennedy Tedford. Welcome, thanks for waiting and appreciate you being here.
So Willman get quick, she said mommy, it's dark outside.
We'd like to publicly recognize and show our appreciation to GW Stout. Mr. Ping is the principal, but more specifically to Ms. Coker, Kennedy's teacher, who had the idea to have Kennedy's parents, us, mine, John, and Stephanie, to spearhead a little presentation for Autism Appreciation Day on April 2nd to raise awareness to children all in the second grade. to, uh, raise awareness, uh, to children all in the second grade. And so, we did that, we did balloons and, of different colors, and, uh, put signs up on the walls. I can, uh, be different, and then they can explain, the kids can explain what they can be different at, and instead of... Yes, Kennedy? You wanna try?
Can you say thank you?
Well, the cake is for the beach.
She's, we're gonna go to the beach for her birthday. And one more thing really quick, too, part of the awareness was also for, um, exceptionalities in general. And what we, um, were well receptive of is the idea of, of, it's plagiarized into the anti-bullying campaign. So the kids had a great, um, activity and awareness, building awareness, not just for autism, but, um, we've been asked to participate in other agencies around town as well. And so, the whole month is autism awareness, and we wanna thank you, and give a public thank you for, um, having this, um, available in our schools and a program for autism.
Thank you.
She's gonna go home now.
Thank you. Next, uh, for public comment is Matthew Gutierrez. Welcome, Mr. Gutierrez.
How you doing, Mr. McMillan? At this time, I'd like to, um, reject my, reject my request for public comment at this time. But I would like to say one thing, is thank you guys for the new basketball floor at Cliff. It's gonna be very well-welcome, but at this time, I'd like to reject my request, okay?
Thank you. Next on our, uh, request for public comment is Gary Staley. Welcome, Mr. Staley.
Mr. President, board members, Mr. Brown. If I tell you that that was my granddaughter, then I can probably get away saying about anything. She's precious. I, uh, as many of you know, I've worked in at-risk, with at-risk students for a long time, for over twenty-seven years. And I look at your mission statement, and it includes, um, all students provided educational opportunities to promote career pathway excellence, both academically and vocationally. And I, two weeks ago, a week ago Saturday, I took twelve of our most at-risk students to Western, um, Mustang Day, it was their, uh, recruitment day. And we took them to all the various booths, and I have to tell you that I was excited, yet a little disappointed. I was excited in the fact that, for the first time, some of our students were actually on a college campus. Some of our students who have lived here all their life. And I was also excited to see what Western is offering in the way of dual enrollment and vocational education, which includes, most of those, the VOTEC stuff includes dual enrollment. Having worked with these at-risk students for a long time, um, one of the things that I have found is that almost every kid that comes into the JPO system is behind academically, and often do not fit in a regular academic setting. And so as you, as you move forward in your deliberations on some very important matters, I would ask you to consider that student, and how we can best help them. Because likely, those students are gonna remain in our community. And the more we can build them, the more resources we can provide them, the better citizens they're going to, to, to become. And so, I know you have a lot of things on your plate as you're deliberating what to do within the district. Uh, please, don't forget those students, please. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Our next request for public comment is Jubal Williamson. Welcome, Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, good evening. Mr. President, board, appreciate you guys hearing me speak tonight. I'm a little ill-prepared for this, because I wasn't planning on speaking. Mr. Gutierrez was gonna speak on his own behalf tonight, but we read on your guys' rules here for public speaking that, um, an employee wishing to speak during public comments should follow the chain of command before addressing the board. I sent an email on April thirteenth, twenty-eighteen, to Mr. Brown, and copied all board members that I found on public record. I was kinda hoping I'd have received a response today from that. I would like to encourage you folks to please visit my email, and please respond, and let us know what's going on, let me know what's going on. I'm not much of a public speaker, so excuse me, but, um, it, it's my understanding through the rumor mill, and it's only rumor mill, that, um, the Cliff High School girls' head basketball coach was removed from his position due to an incorrect hiring process of being a good old boy. I really don't feel like I need, that it was, I don't feel like I need to get involved in that, but that was all addressed in that email, and I would appreciate very much a response, because, you know, Cliff's a small town, and we here, pretty sure that there was a full hiring committee that was involved in that process. And, um, again, Cliff's a small town, we never once heard there was an investigation into it or anything of that nature out there. So, I'd please appreciate it if you guys review that, and make sure that the policy was followed, and that all the proper approvals had been signed off on by the superintendent, by the principal, by the hiring committee, whatever your exact process may be through the sick, uh, through the school district. Please review that for us. It's, uh, been a lot of changes in the last four or five years at Cliff Schools. One of my personal friend's daughters, she's had three coaches in the last three years. She's gonna be a senior this next year, she said she's not playing if she gets a new coach. And, you know, again, small schools, they stink, everybody's at each other's throat all the time. I'm sure that Silver Schools right here is a little isolated from that. You can't ever make anybody happy, or everybody happy, excuse me. You're always gonna have one faction mad at the other. I would just like for you guys to reconsider that, and again, uh, it was my understanding that, that Mr. Gutierrez was said that he offered to reapply, and he would be considered for the position again, that again, quote, "He was hired on a good old boy's system, and the proper policies weren't followed." He has had some flack this year, I haven't personally been to one girls' basketball game this year. Well, excuse me, I take that back, when I went to the cake auction to buy a cake at the sponsor. That's the only one I've been to this year. And I know he's had some flack, but, you, like I said, you can't make everybody happy on both sides, and, and, uh, this action, even if he is hired again by a new hiring committee or whatever, that just jerked his little rug right out from underneath him, and now he doesn't have the respect to those that oppose him, or do not agree with him, and probably won't even have the respects of the ones that do. Anybody can think that they can come in and run right away and complain about something, and then have immediate actions about it. Again, thank you guys very much for taking the time, and I look forward to seeing a response for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want me to respond to that? No, no, I don't think so. Can we respond to you? No, okay. Very well, that's all the public comments that we have submitted. Next on our agenda this evening is executive session, closed pursuant to ten-dash-fifteen-dash-one, H-two through H-nine, NMSA nineteen-seventy-eight. H-two, limited personnel matter staffing. H-two, limited personnel matter superintendent evaluation, and H-seven, attorney-client privileged litigation reports. I believe we need to go to executive session. Yes, sir. So... We'll have a entertain, I think it's roll call? To go, roll call into executive session?
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Montenegro?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Dr. Diaz?
Yes.
And Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Thank you, the time is eight forty-four PM.